Welcome. It's 7:00 PM on Wednesday, June 18, 2025. The Tuilla City Council's meeting in a business meeting being held at the Tuilla City Hall Council Chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Tuilla, Utah. We're also streaming this electronically on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise and repeat after me.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. We'll move on to our next item, which is a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I'm present, and Councilman Hanson is asked to be excused tonight. Our next item is the public comment period. This is the time for the public to address the council. Before I open it up to in-person public comments, we received an email for the council meeting public comment. This was sent Friday, June 6, 2025, from Samantha Willow. It says, "Hello, council members. I would like to present a volunteer proposal to the city that I would run as my MS capstone. One of the amazing things I was able to do in Florida was work with the Disney Conservation Team on monarch conservation research and studies. I would like to bring a similar program to the city to help guide our youth and all residents into awareness of the extreme potential of monarch population extinction. This would include creating a small garden of milkweed, studying the migration patterns and growth rates, and creating reports in conjunction with the San Diego Zoo Wildlife Alliance. These are things I'm already versed in doing, but for the project, it includes public interest and attendance/assistance rate reports. This would mean allowing other supervised volunteers to come assist in counting, monitoring, and research. I would initially bring my group of volunteers in so that I can train them on how to run the cohorts. The initial time would be growing the proper milkweed. This would be done by myself and my volunteers. Down the road, possibly next March, would like to request the school board allow flyers to be given to students so that interest is garnered in the schools as well. I feel the training museum land may be the best location for said garden of milkweed as the land and irrigation are there, and there is ready access when I hold cohort training and meetings. Donations would be accepted and tracked, however, the classes would be free to those volunteering. Donations would not be solicited. There would only be water costs and land use for the city. I can provide milkweed and all needed items. I just need the land and water. Thanks, Sammy Willow." Okay, we'll now turn the time over to the public. We ask that you state your name into the mic. You keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then you sign the paper over by Shiloh. The time is now the public's. Seeing no one coming forward, I will close the public comment period. We'll move on to item four, which is recognition of Michelle Pitt's retirement. We'll turn the time over to Mayor Debbie Nguyen.
Thank you, council. Michelle, would you like to come down? And if you're okay, I'm gonna kind of talk to the audience this way. Kind of a bittersweet moment. You know, we work to earn money to take care of our family and to make a good life for them. And there are many people that work very, very hard to make that happen, and they earn that ability to retire at some point. And we say they retire and do the things that they want to do. But I think in this case, Michelle has been doing things that she's wanted to do. Michelle Pitt is going to be retiring as our city recorder. We're gonna miss her greatly, but I want you to know that she has spent 27 years of service here at Tuilla City as a dedicated, professional employee. There is not one minute that she has not been professional in the job that she has done, dedicated, being here for all the times that she has needed, working every Wednesday night to make sure that our meetings run smooth. She has made great improvements in the way that we collect and we save our important records, and she has made sure that that has happened. So Michelle started working at Tuilla City in 1998 in the attorney's office as a legal secretary. And then she moved to the mayor's office, where she was the mayor's assistant from 2006 to 2011. In the last 14 years, it was really every two years that she was appointed to the city recorder position by the council. That was the law at the time, and the laws changed kind of in the state of Utah. She was the only recorder that was being reappointed every two years. The rest of them were just appointed and didn't have an expiration until they decided to leave. But Michelle took it in stride and said, "One of these days, we'll get the charter changed." And she was instrumental in helping the residents to understand the importance of changing that law. So that was really good. During her time here at Tuilla City, she was also very instrumental in obtaining the 501(c)(3) designation for the Tuilla City Arts Council, and she served on that Arts Council for many years, helped it get going, and made it happen. So I think that there's a lot of things that recorders do that the public just doesn't really understand or know how important that it is, but Michelle has shown us how important that it is. We will miss her greatly, but we know she's gonna be out there having fun and doing the things that she wants to do, and she certainly, certainly has earned this and deserves it. So we wish you the very best.
Thank you.
And we're gonna ask, Shiloh's got a little reminder here for you that you can hang up on your wall. Now, Michelle is retiring effective July the 15th, so this was just our last council meeting. We wanted to do this publicly, and so she'll still be here for a couple more weeks, and we're gonna have a party. We're gonna have a party before she leaves. I would like to invite the council to come down and say you would like to say a few words, and then we'll do the opportunity to say. She's awesome. I do appreciate her very, very much. One of the employees that's always there when you need her, so thank you. All right, we'll let these guys come and do their part.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you.
I'm usually pretty quiet. I don't say too much, but I did want to say a few words. If I can get through it. I can't believe I'm actually retiring. It's something that's just kind of surreal, but thank you so much for this kind recognition. During my time with Tuilla City, I set several like personal and professional goals, and because of Tuilla City's support and their programs, I was able to accomplish many of them. Through the city's educational reimbursement program, I was able to finally finish my bachelor's degree. That was a big deal for me, and I'm really happy to get that done. I also joined the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and I was able to earn the Certified Municipal Clerk designation, and this is something that takes at least two years to obtain, and they require you to be in the job for at least two years before you can earn that. So that was a great way to grow in my profession. One of the most memorable projects, though, is when I worked with Brian Roth to retransform our room down the basement, which I like to call the Records Dump. And will you show that picture? So on the top is the picture what it used to look like. And with Brian Roth's help in the parts department, we ordered shelves, and shelves put up, and now it's a very organized actual records room. You can go in and find a record there. It's really nice. I used to get anxiety when I walked in there, and now it's very peaceful in that room. I love it. And then later this evening, I'll be bringing to the council a retention schedule for their consideration. I've been working on this for quite a while. I think it will really help for us to have our own retention schedule because then each department will know like what records they need to keep and for how long, and it will really help them all manage their records more effectively. So I'm really excited about finally maybe completing that this month. And like has been mentioned through the years, I've had the privilege of working in the attorney's office, the mayor's office, and then as a city recorder. I've served under three different mayors and 10 different city councils. And I've also been, I feel like it's an honor and privilege to pledge my allegiance to my flag and to our country. And I counted up how many city meetings I've been to over the years, because I used to take the minutes back when I worked in the attorney's office, and I've been to over 800 Tuilla City meetings. So I got to pledge my allegiance 800 times or more. So to all the mayors, all the city council members, and all of my colleagues, I'd just like to say thank you for your support, your trust, and the many opportunities you've given me. I feel like I've really been blessed to have been able to work here, so thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. We're excited for you and wish you the best. We'll move on to item five, which is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2025-12 in ordinance of the Tuilla City Council adopting a compensation schedule for fiscal year 2025 through 2026 presented by Kami Perkins, the HR Director.
Whew, half the room got up and left. That's wonderful. Now I have to reprogram because I was too caught up. Michelle's been a fantastic coworker. I think of all of us, I've worked with her the longest. So they actually hired her when I was on maternity leave, six months after they hired me, so she's excellent. All right, back to the agenda. What we have here is, this evening, you're going to be discussing the budget, hopefully approving the budget. And for the sake of the audience, one of the very first things that we work on is to determine our labor costs. That includes not only looking at what our insurance increases are going to be, but also whether or not we're going to adjust the salary schedule. Last year was the first year that the Utah State Legislature required that we present to you executive compensation. And so this hearing here is to adopt our compensation schedule. For the benefit of the audience, I just want to make sure that they're aware, I'm really proud of Tuilla City because we actually have very structured compensation policies in place. We have a section in our employee handbook that is reviewed first by our department heads, has to be approved by the mayor, and ultimately comes to you for approval on the guidelines that we can work within as administration in terms of employee compensation. With that, it spells out pretty much everything, how we handle new hire pay, promotion pay, step increases, demotions, overtime. And within that, it does provide a little bit of discretion to the mayor on department head salaries. However, there is nothing in the budget this year that is asking for anything unique or a deviation from those policies for the department heads. So what we have before you is the adoption of what we are proposing to be the fiscal year 2026 salary schedule, and included in that was last year's salary schedule. It reflects a 2.5% cost of living adjustment on the entry step, and then it calculates from there forward. And if approved, that is what is reflected in your labor costs in your budget this evening.
Thank you, Kami. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead. No, 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 you go ahead.
I just did talk with both Kami and Shannon, and they explained some questions that I had with the compensation schedule, and I just wanted to thank them for their time and efforts, and I feel very confident that what they're doing is in the best interest of our employees and also the fiduciary responsibility to our citizens, so I wanted to thank them both for their time. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, this has a public hearing, so we invite the public to address the council. We ask that you state your name into the mic. You keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then you sign the paper by Shiloh. The time is now the public's. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-12 in ordinance of Tuilla City Council adopting a compensation schedule for FY 2025 and 2026.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item six is a public hearing and motion on Resolution 2025-57, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving budget amendments for fiscal year 2024 through 2025 presented by Shannon Wimmer, the Finance Director.
Good evening, council. This will be our final amendment of the fiscal year '25 budget. We just have nine very brief budget amendments to finish out this year. I'm happy to read through each one if you guys would like me to, or to answer any questions that you might have. These were part of your packet.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? This also has a public hearing, so we invite the public to address the council. We ask that you state your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then sign the paper by Shiloh. Time is now the public's. Seeing no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-57, approving budget amendments for fiscal year '24-'25.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilwoman Goachis. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item seven is a Resolution 2025-56, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council adopting the certified tax rate for fiscal year 2025 through 2026 presented by Shannon Wimmer, the Finance Director.
And this is our yearly adoption of the certified tax rate. As you know, the mayor and city council has made a decision that we will not be going through truth in taxation this year. We will just be adopting the certified tax rate. That will put our total tax rate at .002476 for the fiscal year '26 budget.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
I think we just need to be clear that adopting the certified tax rate means we're not raising taxes.
We're not raising taxes. In fact, so the rate itself is going down 3.5%. Now, depending on your values, depends on how that affects each individual taxpayer, but yes, we are not increasing taxes.
And I think we have to make sure, thanks, Marissa, for that, but I think we also have to add to that, Tuilla City is not raising taxes, because everything, as we know over the whole state, anything happens in Tuilla County is Tuilla City's fault.
Yep. There's a lot of different entities out there.
It's always come to Tuilla City.
Some other entities within the county go through truth in taxation, but we are not. Yes.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. If there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
You got a hand raised.
So this isn't a public comment item, so, yeah, we don't typically take public comments unless there's a public comment period, so.
Very exciting.
Okay, we're happy to stay after and talk with you, though, if you have specific questions about this. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-56, a resolution of Tuilla City Council adopting the certified tax rate for fiscal year '25 and '26.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilwoman Goachis. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item eight is a public hearing and motion on Resolution 2025-35, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council adopting a final budget for Tuilla City for fiscal year 2025 through 2026 presented by Shannon Wimmer, the Finance Director.
Thank you again, council. I did give you a packet that has the changes that we have made since our last meeting on May 21st, but I would just like to briefly read through the majority of those changes as those you're just seeing tonight. They're all fairly minor. We did include $25,000 to finish up the irrigation upgrades that are needed at the cemetery. These first three are all in your Capitals Projects Fund. We included some funding for the Sons of the Utah Pioneers Museum, and then we reduced $60,000 for a park truck that we were actually able to purchase this year, so we've taken that out of the fiscal year '26 budget. We were able to get a good deal on that this year. We had an increase of $7,000 to the pool just for their normal monthly gas expenses up there for their monthly bill. The next one, you'll see, we had a decrease in estimated revenue of $253,000, and that was to plug in the adopted tax rate once we had those final numbers that we get on June 8th. We plugged that in and made the adjustment for that. We did need to add $33,000 in our IT department for some iCloud for our Tyler software and some maintenance fees because we now have online payments for business licensing and building permits, some public works permits. So that's just to get that budget where they need it each year. We did, in the 41 fund, this was just a correction. We didn't have the transfer coming out of the 10 fund matching the transfer in the 41 fund, so this just says an increase of 275, but it really was just fixing a typo. That wasn't really, we didn't make any change there. We increased $10,000 for the streetlight, just their monthly power charges, just to get them more in line of what they're seeing right now. The next ones are just for the police department. They wanted to create some new line items to separately track their ammo, their SWAT team, and then certain police equipment that they buy, tasers, firearms. So they made up all of that within their budgets. We just took some line items down and put those new line items in, but overall, their net was zero change. So that's the only changes that we have made since you last seen the budget on May 21st, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments? Okay, this item has a public hearing, so we invite the public to address the council. We ask that you state your name into the mic. You keep your comments to three minutes or less, and you sign the paper by Shiloh. The time is now the public's. You can come to the mic and make a comment if you'd like.
First, could you tell me what Dave said? What did Councilman McCall say? Whenever, did he laugh? I missed that part. Can you read the notes? Isn't that one of the things that you do?
He wants to know what you said.
He want to know, no, I asked him to put in there that Tuilla City is not raising taxes.
Okay. Not because that's something else, because everybody laughed, but forget, I mean, my Shiloh wants to tell me. Would you like to tell me what he said?
I think it's just because there's other entities in the county who have the potential to raise taxes, but oftentimes, Tuilla City kind of takes the brunt of any tax increase. And a lot of people get confused about the different entities and taxing entities, right, that can increase taxes. So it was just a comment that Dave made, and we're happy to discuss the budget with you and anything else after the meeting.
Well, yeah, then I guess that's it for now. I mean, I thought because they're keeping the budget lower.
Yeah. Okay, we're still in the public comment period. If there's anyone else who'd like to make a comment. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve a Resolution 2025-35, adopting a final budget for Tuilla City for fiscal year '25-'26.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 4-0.
Chairman, may I just have a moment now that you voted and adopted this budget? I just want to thank you for all making a decision early in this process to say that we're not going to raise taxes. I want you to remember that seven years ago, at this very meeting, we had a lot of public comment and letting them know that we were going to have to raise taxes. And one of the residents spoke, Laney Regal, stood up and said, "The only way that you're ever going to help to lower the taxes on the citizens and not have to raise the taxes is to bring commercial business, to push economic development so that those businesses can help to pay some of that property tax and take that burden off the taxpayers." And so I want you to know, it's taken us seven years, but we are there, and we have done that. And in the next few years, with the buildings that are going up now, you're going to continue to see that growth. And like I say, it was a hard thing to do at the time, but really, when you look at it now, it really was very minimal, and we have made a lot of great improvements in our city to take that burden off our taxpayers. I really want to thank all of our department heads. We have been working on this budget for over six months. It's not that just we do it in the last month. It has taken a lot of time and effort, and especially to Shannon and to Kami. I think there have been weeks where we've changed this budget around every day before we finally got it to you in May. It was just change after change, and when you start six months ago, today, the needs are different than it was six months ago, and so it is a challenge. And I've had some people comment that they really appreciate that we present you a balanced budget, and I kind of have to laugh. It's state law. We have to do that, and we do, and we know how to do it. And in the last seven years, again, we have not had to dip into our fund balance to make up anything in our budget. I'm very proud of that, and it is your department heads that are watching their budgets and saving money where they can, and to our employees for working hard to make sure they do the same thing. They're working to earn what we pay them, but they are working any time they can to save money for the city. So I am grateful very much to the staff and to you for seeing the vision, and it's worked. So thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Nguyen.
Thanks, Mayor.
We'll move on to item nine, which is the fraud risk assessment presented by Shannon Wimmer, the Finance Director.
And again, council, this is just our yearly presentation of the fraud risk assessment. We file this each year with the state auditor's office just to show them how we meet the needs of how they want to assess the fraud risk for entities. Again, this year, our score hasn't changed. We're 355, which is low, and it's the same as it's been. Most of this stuff, you know, probably really won't change unless they come up with a new form, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on the fraud risk assessment as well.
Low is good in this case.
Yes, low is good.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
I will... I will, we don't need a vote on this, do we? Just a presentation, okay. Okay, thank you. All right, we're on to item 10, is our Resolution 2025-51, a resolution of the Tuella City Council approving the annexation of 1,432 acres of property known as the Compass Point Property into the North Tuella City Special Service District. I'll be, I don't know, Lindsay, do you have anything to present? I was just going to read our resolution, and if anyone has questions for Lindsay, then she can answer. So this resolution is to annex in the 1,432 acres into the North Tuella Special Service District. That district was originally created in June 16th of 1999. The petition that we received was from May 22nd, 2025, to annex in this 1,432 acres. It's all held by one common ownership, the petitioner. And just for those that don't know what the North Tuella Special Service District is, it's a special service district on the north end of Tuella that maintains the special features and amenities related to the unique designs of public street lighting, public signage, public drainage, and flood control, public recreation properties, public street design, and traffic calming features, and associated and integral public landscaping located within that specific district. So for those of you who have been down on the north end of town, 2,000 North is a good example of this, the grass area that has flowers, the roundabout, that's all maintained by the district. There's a seven-member board that we actually meet tomorrow night if anyone wants to come to it, so, at 8:00 upstairs. But that's what the district is, so I don't know if Marissa or anyone wants to.
The residents in the district pay an extra tax to pay for that maintenance of those things.
Correct, yep. And then that money's all used in that specific area to maintain it, and it's worked really well over the last, what's that, 26 years, so. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, I'm really excited to see this done. It's something that we've been working on for quite a while, so I think this will really benefit the north end of Tuella, and I'm happy for Compass Point. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-51, a resolution of the Tuella City Council approving the annexation of 1,432 acres, a property known as Compass Point Property into the North Tuella City Special Service District.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilwoman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman McCall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes four zero. Item 11 is a public hearing and motion on Resolution 2025-52, a resolution of the City Council, the Council of Tuella City, Utah, the city providing for the creation of the Compass Point Public Infrastructure Districts Number 1 through 8, collectively the districts, as independent districts, authorizing and approving a governing document and an inter-local agreement, appointing boards of trustees, authorizing other documents in connection therewith and related matters presented by Matthew Johnson, the Assistant City Attorney. Sorry, that was a lot to read.
It's a lot, thank you, Council. I'll keep my comments brief because Lindsay from Compass Point is here and available for comments and questions, but we have received Compass Point's position to create these public infrastructure districts. These are similar to special service districts. They create a separate taxing entity to create an alternate phase of financing infrastructure for these areas. The money would have to be used for the infrastructure and have to be used for these areas. I'll step aside.
Okay, Lindsay?
I'll give you a second, members, and Chairman Brady. A few things that I do want to touch bases on that were kind of late in development, and I apologize, an email has come out from the District Council as well. In our initial petition, we had recognized three board members to sit on that board at the very beginning because of some developments that have come in in discussion internally. We have changed who those board members will be, so we would be looking for just a correction on the resolution as drafted to recognize that. We have submitted the appropriate disclosures and voter confirmations, so the new members proposed would be myself, Steve Peterson will remain as a board member, and then our CFO of the Perry Companies, Chris Jupson. So I do want to make note of that. I also want to make note of Compass Point as a project and the intention, right? We are looking for the PID to help finance the large amount of infrastructure that we hope will become a great community called Compass Point, including, you know, the annexation into the Special Service District for the roads and trails and all the things we anticipate bringing into the community. And I'm happy to answer any other questions. I also have Sam Elder here from Davidson Company, who will be representing us and helping us through the bonding as we move forward through the process.
Are there any questions or comments from the council?
There was on page 16, if you read through it, there is one reference to Utah County instead of Tuella County, which I sent to Matt and the mayor earlier today, and I think it's been corrected in a new document.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well.
So this item has a public hearing. We ask that you state your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then you sign the paper by Shiloh.
Oh, okay. Pramis S. Butler, where is Compass Point? Where is that located?
Yeah, it's on the north end of Tuella, so all of that undeveloped land on the north end of Tuella City.
Where they're building is Smith's.
I didn't know there was a Smith's, but is it, does it have an address?
So the, it's a large area, yeah.
Around what?
Around 3,100 North.
3,100 North, okay. All right, now sign, you know.
Thank you. Time is still the public's. Seeing no one else come forward, I will close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-52 with the corrections stated to the board members, as Lindsay stated.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes four zero. Item 12 is a public hearing and motion on Ordinance 2025-20, an ordinance of Tuella City reassigning the zoning for approximately 11.7 acres of property located at 249 East, 1,000 North from the RR5 Residential Zoning District to the LI Light Industrial Zoning District presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the City Council. You are familiar with this property as it came through the land use map amendment process a couple of weeks ago. This is the follow-up application to that. This is the zoning map amendment whereby a new zoning district is requested and potentially assigned to the property. Just for the public's information, I'll go through the basics of the zoning map amendment request. The request is to change the zoning for the property highlighted in red on the aerial photograph. It's approximately 11.7 acres. It rests immediately north of 1,000 North at approximately 200 East. There is, most of the property surrounding the subject property is undeveloped ground. However, the fire station number three is located to the west, or to the east, excuse me, and then to the west, we have the Our House Assisted Living Facility. Current zoning of the property is RR5. There is a sliver of light industrial on the northwest corner. Most of the property surrounding the subject property is owned RR5. The RR5 zone is rural residential five-acre lots, and really it was attached to this property as more of a holding zone during a time when the city wasn't sure what they wanted to see in this area. Just for your information, the RR5 does have land uses that are specific to it. What you can see in the RR5 zone are single-family residential homes with accessory dwelling units, accessory buildings. You could have agriculture, horticulture, and livestock production, churches and religious facilities, home occupation, schools, parks, and golf courses, residential facilities for elderly and disabled persons, and also nurseries and greenhouses. That's a brief synopsis of what the RR5 zoning district is. This is the land use map, recently amended to the light industrial land use designation. The light industrial land use designation includes both the light industrial zoning district as well as the industrial service zoning district. This is the zoning that's being requested by the applicant and how the zoning map would appear if this zoning is reassigned to the light industrial. The light industrial zoning district, I want to emphasize, is not a heavy industrial zoning district. It is a district that emphasizes heavier commercial uses but not heavy industrial. So the uses that occur in the light industrial zone are uses that do not generate impact in terms of noise, vibration, glare, odors, dust, and so forth. Many of the uses that you'll find in the commercial zoning districts can occur in the light industrial, and you'll also find many commercial land uses that can occur in the light industrial zone. Some of those uses are automobile sales, service, repair, and auto body repair, business professional offices. You could have a convenience store, gas station, other retail uses, restaurant, fast food, banks and financial services, healthcare providers, health clubs, hotels, laundromats, kennels, a cannabis pharmacy, personal services, which would be barber shop. You could have a private club, which is a bar, a reception center, recycling collection center, recreation facility, outdoor theater, veterinary clinic, warehouse, and personal storage facility. So those are some of the uses that would occur in the light industrial zoning district. I also wanted to include a snippet from our master transportation plan showing how this property and this application fits into our master transportation plan. The dashed blue line is not an existing road, it's a proposed road, and you can see where the subject property is, the purple, that this is a key part of that future road, which will eventually connect to Western Acres, which is gradually extending that road south. Right now, this map doesn't quite accurately show that, but it's extending down pretty close to 1280, 1280 North. It doesn't connect with that, but it's getting about the same latitude, I guess, if you will. Planning Commission held a public hearing for this on June 11th, 2025, and unanimously recommended in favor of the LI zoning district. That's the request of the application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, thank you, Andrew. This item also has a public hearing. We invite the public to address the council. Keep your comments to, I'll state your name, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then sign the paper by Shiloh. The time is now the public's. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-20, an ordinance of Tuella City reassigning the zoning for approximately 11.7 acre of property located at 249 East, 1,000 North from the RR5 Residential Zoning District to the LI Light Industrial Zoning District.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes four zero. Item 13 is Ordinance 2025-18, an ordinance of Tuella City enacting Tuella City Code Chapter 3-8 and adopting the Utah Wildland Urban Interface Building Code presented by Nick Wall, the Fire Marshal.
Thank you, Chairman Brady, thank you, Council. So with the recent bills that went across the state this year, they did a House Bill 48, which is Utah wildfire risk and insurance. And with that bill came the need for counties and cities to adopt the 2006 WUWE code, which is the Utah Wildland Urban Interface Code. And so I just wanted to give a brief summary of what this bill will do along with the WUWE code and just kind of go through it a little bit, if that's okay. Okay, so the House Bill 48 is a comprehensive wildfire risk management bill targeting the Wildland Urban Interface or the WUWE areas in Utah. And it introduces a state-specific wildfire risk mapping tool to improve risk assessments and modify insurance industry practices and implement mitigation strategies. The bill shifts evaluation from broad national maps to precise property level analysis, potentially reducing insurance costs for many homeowners. It mandates counties to inspect high-risk properties annually, apply mitigation fees, and enforce WUWE building codes. Insurance providers must transparently use the state map tool for decisions and offer clear explanations for policy changes. And the bill also updates fire safety codes and encourages residents to adopt fire mitigation measures by offering potential insurance incentives. And the economic benefits include long-term savings on firefighting and disaster recovery, with the model possibly serving as a template for other states. So they're looking at it as on a national level, and we're kind of trying to be proactive to get out in front of this with all this stuff that's been happening. And we've actually seen some of this already happening in Utah with homeowners being dropped from their insurances in these areas. And so this bill will provide a way for those insurance companies to better evaluate the risk in those neighborhoods and then apply the premiums as they see fit. The bill also outlines what is high risk, what's moderate risk, and whatnot. It also lists out what an explanation of defensible space is. This is dependent upon the area, so it changes if it's high risk to moderate risk to low risk. It'll outline all that, and with the adoption of this, it'll allow us to be able to just bring over the new code once it's out. It's not out yet, and this House Bill is set to take effect January 2026, so they asked all cities and counties to get out of it and adopt it if you haven't already, and so that's what we're doing. Trying to get that adopted and try to help our citizens and help those homeowners in that area to be better prepared and be able to lower their premiums maybe and get the insurance they need for their residents, so. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions or comments?
It said that there are some different building codes. Are they really different, or is it just kind of if you're in a high-risk area, you need to put in firewalls, stuff like that?
There's a lot, there's a lot that still has to go into it, and there are different building standards for those areas. And it's basically, what they call it, is hardening the home. So there's different ways to harden the home, both if your roof and your eaves and the construction materials for the outer part of the home and whatnot. So there are some different standards there that will have to be implemented, but yeah, it'll all be in that bill and in the WUWE code.
Makes sense.
Going forward, so.
Okay. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Ordinance 2025-18, enacting Tuella City Code Chapter 3-8 and adopting the Utah Wildland Urban Interface Building Code.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes four zero. Item 14 is Resolution 2025-37, a resolution of the Tuella City Council consenting to the payment of a retention bonus to school resource officers, SROs, assigned on a regular full-time basis to a school for the 2025-2026 school year, presented by Kami Perkins, the HR Director.
Okay, pleasure to be back up here. Earlier, we adopted a salary schedule, and I spoke briefly about how we have a policy and procedure manual that you approve that governs our compensation practices and what we're allowed to do. Something that is not included in our compensation program is a bonus program for school resource officers. And we began this two years ago. The first year was a trial to see how it did in helping us to retain police officers in service in our schools. And we discussed at that time some of the challenges, the less favorable circumstances and things that their responsibilities entail, and we found some success. We were able to get some stability with our officers not only wanting to go into the school but also not requesting mid-year to be removed from the school, because it is a different line of scope of duty for police officers. Last year, we brought that back again, and we're happy to say that all of our SROs remained in the school with the schools they were assigned to, with the exception of one who we chose to promote within the organization to a detective position, or transfer, I should say, to a detective position. And he did forego the bonus, and he took that assignment. One of the things that was brought up to us, however, is some of the officers began to calculate some numbers, and because we do the patrol officer holiday buyback, so it's the officers that are on patrol, years ago, they used to have to substitute another holiday, and they were dealing with getting all the officers scheduled, and we're already dealing with tight staffing, and then somebody go on leave. The council you approved, or the council members at the time, to where if an officer is off, we'll just buy their holiday back from them at straight time. Well, what that turns out to be- Well, what that turns out to be is it's 12 hours of straight time compensation for them. Approximately half of the holidays, just luck of the draw on how the rotation works. So some of our school resource officers started to run the numbers, and they said, we're giving up compensation now being in the school system, where if we were on the road, we would have that. So the chief spoke to me about this, and we ran the numbers, and you in the past had also expressed, is $2,500 enough of a bonus for the school system? We have included in the budget this year to increase that retention bonus to $5,000. It equates to just a little bit over, about $3 an hour for their school season. It's available if they do the full school season. If somebody does leave, then we will prorate whomever it is that steps in. This also includes the addition of Desert Peak High School's new SRO program, and the chief has also been working with the school to have one of our sergeants staffed full-time in one of the schools. So it's a really exciting time for us, but because this is not in our compensation policy, we're bringing it back to you again this year for your approval and support on being able to offer that to our SRO officers.
Okay, any questions or comments? So there's four schools in Tulacity that, it's the high schools, Tulac, Desert Peak, and then the junior highs? Or do we not have to?
And Blue Peak.
And Blue Peak, okay. Okay. All right.
It's almost turning into its own team, its own division, which is why we now have a sergeant assigned full-time. Last year, we had one kind of split, but this year, it's going to be a full-time sergeant over the team.
Okay, great. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2025-37, a resolution of Tulacity Council consenting to the payment of a retention bonus to school resource officers, SROs, assigned on a regular full-time basis to a school for the 2025-26 school year.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item 15 is Resolution 2025-38, a resolution of the Tulacity Council declaring that Tulacity, after July 1st, 2025, will pick up and pay an amount of the required employee contributions for all Tulacity employees who are members of the Utah State Retirement Tier Two Public Safety and Firefighter Contributory Retirement Plan, and includes provisions relating to the employer pickup, presented by Kami Perkins.
Just as a refresher for you and also for the benefit of the audience, last year, the Utah State Retirement System implemented a required employee contribution, meaning employees have to pay towards their Tier Two pension plan if they elected the hybrid option. Hybrid is the one that has, if it's below a certain amount, they get a little in their 401K. If it's above a certain amount, they have to pay a little bit more for it. And at the time, that rate was 0.7%. We handled that last year, and in the past, the rate for the public safety was, started at two and a half, then it went to three and a half, then it went even higher. So the plans are different, although they're both Utah State retirement plans, the structure and the legal requirements under each plan are different for police and fire than they are for the rest of the workforce. They just call it the public employees versus public safety. One of the things that happened, we were hoping that this last legislative session, that they would change the law to allow us to consider picking up and paying the employee's share in the public employees' plan. That didn't happen. They've left that, and they did not make the change to allow us to even to consider that. So that has to be passed on to the employees by law. In the public safety plan, however, it remains to where we can still pick that up. Last year, when we first implemented this, we made the decision that we would pick up the portion of public safety, but pass on to them the same amount that the rest of the employees had to pay. So everybody had to pay 0.7% if they were in that plan. Well, what we found is we were unique in that. There was us, and Salt Lake City, I think, were the two that I knew of, I believe it was Salt Lake City, if I'm on record, I probably should correct that. I think it was Salt Lake City, that actually passed on a portion of that. And we saw that later, the county picked it up, Grantsville picked it up, and so it's put us in this competitive deficit in relation to public safety, specifically our police positions. So this year, we are bringing back to you another resolution, and this is also included in the budget to where we will pick up the employee, the full employee required contribution for our police and fire personnel who are in the Tier Two hybrid plan. And in order to do that with the state retirement office, we do have to have a formal resolution and authorization for our mayor to sign the official declaration and paperwork for us in the payroll office to make that change. So that is what's before you today.
Any questions or comments?
That was a very good explanation. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-38, a resolution of Tulacity declaring that on July 1st, 2025, we will pick up and pay an amount of the required employee contribution for all Tulacity employees who are members of the Utah State Retirement Tier Two Public Safety and Firefighter Contributory Retirement Plan, and includes provisions relating to the employer pickup.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item 16 is Resolution 2025-53, a resolution of the Tulacity Council approving an agreement with England Construction LLC for the Glen Eagles Park restroom project presented by Darwin Cook, the Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, council. Is this working? Oh, there we go. Just to give a little update on some of the things, first of all, I'm bringing you six resolutions tonight for park projects. All of these projects are actually part of the next year's budget, not in this current budget that we're currently in. So all these take effect after July 1. Due to the fact that, due to the July 4 celebrations, our next council meeting won't be until July 16th. So we're bringing these to you so that our vendors can get their stuff ordered and get things in the works, so that just the natural supply chain of some of these resolutions is going to take us a little while to get the product and to get the equipment here. So we're bringing these to you at this city council meeting for approval. All of these were in your current budget that you just approved, and so we're obviously doing these after you approved the budget, but, and then a couple of these, I just, the first couple were, these are actually park impact projects. And just for the benefit of the audience, we have a park impact for every new residence that comes into the city, into the infrastructure, and so each developer pays an impact fee, and then that goes into our park impact fund, which then we, through your guys' approval, we fund these projects. Just, so one of the projects, the big projects that's been covered with this, is we've been able to fund the completion of the England Acres Park, so that is a park impact project. And the two of these that I'm bringing to you here at the beginning are also park impact projects. The first one, as you read, was Resolution 2025, which is an agreement with England Construction to build a restroom facility at that park. We've been putting a little bit of time into Glen Eagles and trying to improve that park, and so we'd like to, at this time, kind of make it more usable for the public, and putting an actual restroom facility there versus bringing in porta-potties every year. It does have a soccer field, a couple shade pavilions, and a nice, well, three-year-old playground. So we sent this out to bid. We did only receive one bid back on this project, and it was from England Construction for 309, 309,000. We were asking for a contingency of 15,450, and this, part of that contingency is just the extras that come with a project like this. We provide our own meters, we, you know, have to pay for engineering services and stuff like that as well, so that's what that contingency is for. This restroom will be very similar to the exact, well, almost exactly, the restroom that we built at Settlers Park a year ago.
Will it have cameras on it?
It will have cameras on it.
Okay. Every restroom should have cameras, because they get vandalized often, so, great. Any other questions or comments?
I have a kind of a question, Darwin, if you don't mind.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, sometimes the vandalism includes paper towels, and I'm just wondering, is there a price comparison between putting in hand dryers versus having paper towels?
Quite substantial, actually. It is very cheap. The paper towel holders are actually fairly inexpensive. They're about $24 to $30 a piece, and you obviously lose all the paper towel that's in them. The blowers are about $180 to $200 each. So it is cheaper just to keep putting paper towel dispensers in them, so.
For a little bit, it's cheaper.
I think for the long term, for the long term, maybe a dryer is something that we should look at.
Yeah, they'll rip the dryer off the very next day you put it on.
Little buggers, man.
We've gone, so we don't have them at England Acres anymore, just because of the fact that in one year, I think we went through two of them, just in this family.
So we've had them before.
Yeah, we've had them in the restrooms before.
Okay. Get like neighborhood park watch patrol.
We've had them at the pool as well, and those have been vandalized. I think that, at the pool, it's pretty much kind of cut down a little bit. Some of that was just initiated through a TikTok challenge, but, and the school was suffered at that time as well, so.
Well, I'm excited for a restroom there. I think it's needed and...
For sure.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully people can keep their hands off of it and respect it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-53, a resolution of the Tulacity Council approving an agreement with England Construction LLC for the Glen Eagles Park Restroom Project.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item 17 is Resolution 2025-55, a resolution of the Tulacity Council approving an agreement with England Construction LLC for the Veterans Memorial Park Restroom Project presented by Darwin Cook, the Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay, this restroom facility was sent out at the exact same time as the Glen Eagles restroom was, so we sent it out as a lump sum project for both bathrooms, with the option of not doing one, depending on the budget. So we, Veterans Park was also sent out to bid, with only one bid being returned with England Construction in the amount of 308,000, $308,500, with a contingency of 15,425. This is the exact same facility as the other two, so it would be the same as Glen Eagles and Settlers Park. Interesting, too, is these are actually the same bathrooms that we have at the golf course as well, that we built about three years ago. They are, both of them, I should say, they're multi-gender bathrooms, they will have security cameras at Veterans Park as well. We just found, this is kind of the mayor and I have like talked about this for years, we have so many events that we do at Veterans Park, you know, Dave, you sponsor a lot of events there, too, and it's just a great central park in our city. Every time there's an event there, we bring in, you know, four or five porta-potties. We just really like to have an established flushing toilet, all the, you know, hand washing just facility at that park, so it just seems a little more conducive for those events that we, that take place there. So again, this one will be on the north part of the park, kind of on the center, center run of the east and west side of that north side of the park. It's the closest point of our utilities, and then we just have a little cubby there in the parking lot that we can put the restroom facility in, so.
I think it's high time. We've needed a bathroom there for a long time.
Yeah. We, we've probably, well, probably from day one, right?
Yeah.
A little six years ago, I think, we talked about this.
Are there any other parks that we plan on putting restrooms? It seems like this kind of...
So this, this kind of, the parks that get used the most, this is kind of completes most of them. I mean, Chairman, you know about Linear Park, and at some point, I think it might be appropriate to get a bathroom there at some point. It gets, it gets used, but these are the parks that we set up events at.
Right.
So at Glen Eagles and at Veterans, we do plan events there. Whereas Linear, it's more of a come and use it, first come, first serve. And, and you know, I know the younger soccer group does play games there, occasionally a practice there, I should say. So I think, I mean, honestly, our next one would be probably that one, if we were to ever do another one. Obviously, as I've mentioned in many staff meetings, I, as long as I'm in this position, I will never accept a park from a developer unless it has a restroom in it.
That's good.
Yeah, smart plan.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2025-55, a resolution of Tulacity Council approving an agreement with England Construction LLC for the Veterans Memorial Park Restroom Project.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item 18 is Resolution 2025-54, a resolution of the Tulacity Council approving an agreement with England Construction LLC for the Glen Eagles Park Water Meter and Pressure Reducing Zone Valve Project presented by Darwin Cook.
Thank you. So Resolution 2025-54 is actually a par tax project. So over the last couple of years, to give you a little history on this project and how we've gotten to this point, is we've attempted, so when the park was originally put in, the irrigation system was way under design and not built to the current standards that we would hold a contract or two. Glen Eagles Park is a park that was built and part of the development plan given to the city after the development was finished. We have had this park, we've attempted a couple of projects there, so we've gone through and tried to split a bunch of the zones off into smaller zones to try to get the water to go a little further. Our issue is we're just, we just don't have the volume there. It currently has a two-inch connection, and we need to upgrade that to four-inch connection to be able to provide the volume of water that we need to actually irrigate that properly. In the shoulder months, we do okay at that park, just because it's cooler and the turf does a little better when it's cooler, but when it starts to warm up, we just can't keep the turf, and so. We decided that this is probably our first step, so just so you know, in your budget, you've approved the funding for this, this part of the project, but also the part of the project to actually upgrade the zones. But before we upgrade the zones, we do have to get the volume there first. So this part of the project is to upgrade that connection, put a new four-inch RPZ in, and then, or an RZP, and then, which is the Reducing Zone Valve Project, or Reducing Zone Valve, and then, and then go and, one, add some more zones, and then put on a different type of a smart timer on the, on the facility. This project was sent out to bid last summer. We did have two responsive bids, Broken Arrow and England Construction. It was sent out as a project with both Red Del Papa and Glen Eagles. At the time, we decided only to do Red Del Papa due to budget restraint. However, I did reach out to the contractor, asked him if they would honor their bid if we did it this late, and he agreed that he would honor it as long as we could get him, the contract approved, so that he could get his parts ordered as soon as he can before they start creeping up. So the resolution is for $109,500 with a contingency of 5,475, again with England Construction. And any questions? I should mention also that it's nice that England Construction is doing this, just because, so the state requires us to keep domestic use and irrigation use separate and metered separate. So what's going to happen at this site is the existing two-inch connection and meter that we have will actually be used for the new bathroom that's being built there, and then this will be, this will be metered differently to do the irrigation, so. And this same contractor will be obviously doing both of those projects, so.
Okay, thanks, Darwin. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-54, approving an agreement with England Construction LLC for the Glen Eagles Park Water Meter and
Construction LLC for the Glen Eagles Park Water Meter and Pressure Reducing Zone Valve Project.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilwoman Goaches. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes four zero. Item nineteen is Resolution 2025-58, a resolution of the Tulare City Council approving a contract with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for the installation of ball field lighting at Parker's Park presented by Darwin Cook, the Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay, so at Parker's Park, there's two little league baseball fields there. They were built, exactly, I'm not exactly sure, I apologize, I should have looked that up, several years ago when Overlake was under, under construction.
Long time ago.
They get used a lot, as you know, especially if you're in that area. And they do, they are lighted ball fields. In the process, over the last couple of years, we have gone through all the ball field lighting to repair burned out lights and to fix them so that they were working. As many of you know, we did have some electrical stolen, electrical wire stolen at Red Del Papa that had those inoperative for about two years, if I'm not mistaken. So we've just little by little tried to get all the lights up and running. Some of the lights do work at Parker's Park, so as we were moving on to get that one fixed, because there's eighteen lights that currently are not working at that field, or between the two fields. And as we started investigating this one, our current lift isn't tall enough to get to the top of those, so we had Musco come in and do an assessment on it. What we found out was, so they're not Musco lights, which is okay, but they're, I believe it's Westinghouse that the manufacturer of those ones. But they're old enough that at that time, they were actually part, putting the driver on top of the pole with the light. So each light has its own driver. The way that they build them now is the driver's actually on the pole that then drives all lights on that pole. What we've run into in this situation is that the lights that are out, it's actually the driver that's out, not the bulb. So they don't make those type of drivers anymore, or that type of light anymore. So what Musco recommended is that we leave the poles, because they can use the poles and just replace each of the heads on the light. And then they would add a driver onto the, each of the pole to drive the lights on that pole. The nice thing about this is, as many of you know with our pickleball field, some of the times their lights get left on, not intentionally, I think it's just accidentally. We can set those parameters up so that they have a timer on them, that they don't get left on. And then we can also remotely turn them off as well. But, so the contract with Musco Lighting, and they are a state contractor, is for two hundred and forty-four thousand five forty-five to replace all of the heads and the drivers on the two fields at Parker's Park.
When do we anticipate? Is this like July? Because baseball goes through most of summer.
Yeah, and they also do, they also do their, what's the, not the accelerated, but the, oh my God, All-Stars. And so, so, so as soon as we get this in their hands, they'll get the stuff ordered. And it's been fortunate lately that this, they've been able to get the equipment in fairly fast. So we're predict, we want it done so hopefully that they can use those lights when they hit the ball ball. But it will for sure be ready for their season next year when they start, so.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Just, I believe, did you mention, you mentioned you could control them remotely and they'll also be on timers, that's correct?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-58, approving a contract with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for the installation of ball field lighting at Parker's Park.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilwoman Goaches. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes four zero. Item twenty is Resolution 2025-59, a resolution of the Tulare City Council approving a purchase and financing documents with Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation for the purchase of eighty new golf carts presented by Darwin Cook.
So this resolution, to give you a little history on this, so in 2019, we replaced the entire golf cart fleet at the Oak Hill Golf Course with eighty Yamaha golf carts. At the particular time we did that, it was, as many of you may know, way overdue. We actually had employees that their number one job was actually just to go out and rescue golf carts to bring them back. And that's what they did. A lot of times, their whole entire shift was to go trade out a golf course and then get the broken one back. So at the time, we, the city council did approve the, the purchase of eighty Yamaha golf carts. At that time, our plan was, is that when the six, or the five years ended up, we're now rolling into the sixth year, that we would start replacing them twelve at a time. So we started, myself and the superintendent and the golf pro started looking into this. And so if, if we did twelve today and just purchased twelve, we'd be sitting at about seven, over seventy thousand dollars just to replace the twelve. And then next year, we'd do the same thing, replace twelve. And, and we do have twelve that we do need to replace. So we just keep picking the worst twelve and then replacing them. And talking with Highland Golf, what they recommended we do is just enter into lease because we can get into, we can replace the whole entire fleet for about thirty-three thousand dollars a year and, and have new golf carts for the entire, eighty new golf carts for the entire five year of the lease. So what I'm presenting to you today, and we did have to make, because when this was sent to you in the packet, we only had the sample contract from Yamaha, but we do now have the actual contract before you in the, in the packet. So in the third paragraph where it says, whereas Yamaha's pricing terms, I want to read that because we did have to change that and I want to read it into the record so that it's correct. So whereas Yamaha's price terms include a total value price of five hundred and nine thousand three hundred and six dollars, we will receive a trade-in value of a hundred and ninety-six thousand, a total financed amount of three hundred and thirteen sixty, and principal and interest payments of six, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand sixty dollars and eighty cents over five years, which is the thirty-three thousand six sixty payment, after which time Highland Golf will take title of the golf carts and responsibility for the remaining financed amount, as shown in the, in the contract. And basically, what this is stating is that we're leasing them for five years and then Highland is going to take up the rest of the finance. We can decide at that time whether we want to buy them or, or whatever we want to do. Their recommendation is, is because we don't know what the value of golf carts will be at that time, that then let them deal with it versus us having to deal with that. And then we just decide at that time whether we just continue this process of getting, replacing our whole, entire, whole entire fleet or trying to go, you know, or, this also gets us out of the, of the, of the lock-in with Yamaha. When you have Yamaha, you have to trade them for Yamaha in order to get the value we're getting, because they're giving us a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for our current, current carts. That's clear as mud.
So the, but the ones we have now are five or six years old, so.
They're six years old.
Six years.
And this is a five-year lease?
This is a five-year.
So at the end of it, we don't anticipate them to be in great condition, right?
Well, we'll probably end up with twelve or sixteen that are in bad shape again, that we'll either have to make the decision of what to do with those sixteen or, or just, our bang for our buck is doing this. I should mention, too, that a couple of months ago, we did bring fees to you, and this and the other resolution is a hundred percent covered by that fee increase for our golf cart rental.
So is there a day that you, all eighty are in use, or they're just rotating?
Anytime there's a tournament, all eighty are in use.
That's great.
That's good.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Before I say, to make this, I did want to make out a point that, he said they're six years old and that they are beat up pretty good. I mean, they, they really are beat up. With that being said, not trying to jump on your bandwagon.
And we kind of want to, you know, we, the pros, the pros direction, or his goal is to try to, we do have a fantastic golf course. I mean, it's beautiful, it's, it's great, but we also want to be known that we have reliable golf carts. It's an enjoyable experience because we have reliable equipment, too. And not, not, I mean, it's, golfing's supposed to be relaxing, just so you know, Dave. So, but we want to maintain that. We don't want people to have to go dill and start complaining about our, our, you know, junky equipment, junky golf carts, so.
That's true.
Because it does catch up with you very fast.
But, but, you know, it's frustrating when you swing and miss the whole ball.
I don't know if that's equipment.
You're not supposed to admit that, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-59, a resolution of Tulare City Council approving the purchase and financing documents with Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation for the purchase of eighty new golf carts.
I'll second. And I'll just note also that the resolution we're signing is correct with the language he read.
Yes, thank you, yes, perfect. I mostly wanted to get that read in for the audio record so that it was in the record.
Great. We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilwoman Goaches, no, Manzio. We'll take a two vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes four zero. Item twenty-one is Resolution 2025-60, a resolution of the Tulare City Council approving a contract with Tag Marshall International Limited for the lease of a golf cart GPS system for the Oak Hill Golf Course presented by Darwin Cook.
Okay, so with these eighty new golf carts, we would like to also purchase eighty GPS units, Tag Marshall GPS units to go onto the golf carts. The benefit of these is they're, each golf cart will have like a ten-inch screen on it. And this helps us marshal the field a little bit because it's all done digitally. The, the system actually tracks where each team's at. It can tell whether they're behind, whether they're ahead. It can, and it will remind them, it will tell them that they need to pick up their pace. It also gives us an idea of where the golf carts are at so that we know their location. And we can also set geo fences up with the golf carts so they can't be driven off of the, off of the golf course.
So they can't be stolen after a parade?
Correct.
If they're used at the parade, we can put them in marshal mode so they can be used at the parade, but.
Asking for a friend.
We do have an issue during the day. It doesn't happen at night because the west, or the, yeah, the west gate is closed, but we do have an issue with the golfers leaving the course and visiting other drink establishments to bring a drink onto the golf course. So we'd like to kind of nip that in the bud, but there has, they, there are results on this of it actually speeding up your play. We're hoping that, so I should let you know that we are maxed out on our tee times. Like, it would be, we would be very, very hard pressed to add another tee time in our current schedule. What we're hoping this will do is that if we can, if we can improve the, the flow of play, that we can then, through this process, be able to add a couple more tee times. This also does allow us to sell advertisement on each of the holes. So as the golf cart approaches, not only the hole, but also the tee, as the golf cart approaches that tee, an advertisement for that tee will pop up. We can change those. Our goal is to actually use some of the advertising spots at each of them for city events and city purposes, but then also to sell them to local businesses for sponsoring a tee or sponsoring a hole. And we can change them as often as we want or, you know, and offer them for as long as we want, so.
Is the sponsorship enough to pay for the GPS itself?
Yes, so, so, yes, they'll pay above the GPS, but also, when we did the calculations, the rate increase for the carts will also cover this fee as well.
Great. That's cool. Yeah, I like that idea. Okay, any other questions or comments?
We're getting fancy. We got.
Yeah, GPS.
It is a popular system on most of the, on most golf carts, this is what they're, or golf courses, this is what they're going to.
I don't golf much, so, never.
It's not as relaxing as me, for me, as it should be.
Some of them, which he's not asking for, but some of the courses have, that on their golf carts, if you're playing in a tournament, it'll tell you what everybody's score is.
Oh.
Cool.
That you know how far behind you are. Or you know how, how much Johnny is cheating.
I should mention, too, yeah, and I should mention, too, it will actually alert the actual marshal if the golf cart has been involved in any sort of, like, if they hit something or any, if it has any sudden jarring or anything, it will actually alert them that something, if it tips over, it alerts them instantaneously. I think we should be able to identify when damage actually happens to the carts, too.
No more bumper cars.
Great. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-60, approving a contract with Tag Marshall International Limited for the lease of a golf cart GPS system for the Oak Hill Golf Course.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes four zero.
Thank you, Council, and just like to say thank you for your support. I know some of these projects are not cheap. They are, I recognize that and we do not take it lightly. But thank you for your support in being able to offer these things to the public and, you know, facilities that are overdue and also play space that needs to be improved. So thank you.
Thanks, Darwin. Item twenty-two is Ordinance 2025-19, an ordinance of Tulare City adopting government records retention schedules presented by Michelle Pitt, the City Recorder.
Thank you. I'm really excited to bring this before you tonight. I've been working on this for quite some time. This is to adopt our own Tulare City records retention schedule. And until this time, we've just defaulted to this State of Utah's records retention schedule, which is fine, but sometimes it's hard to find a specific record on their schedule and it'll just be a lot easier for us to find it on our own schedule. And I've broken it down by departments and specific records that belong to those departments. And sometimes things overlap and things change in departments, but it's, it'll be, I feel like it will be a really easy way for departments to find how long they need to keep their records and what records they need to keep. So I, I'm asking that you consider passing this tonight and then from here, it needs to go into the Utah State Archives. They will look it over and make sure that we're not breaking any laws or not keeping records long enough and things like that. So they have to approve it as well. And then it becomes official after that.
Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. When I was reading the packet, I was like, how many pages? It was just every, we have so many records. I don't think people realize how many records there are in a city, because it is like seventy pages long.
Yeah, we have a lot. A lot to keep track of, so.
Good job.
Yeah, it looks great.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Ordinance 2025-19, adopting government records retention schedules.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes four zero.
Thank you very much.
Item twenty-three is renaming Ordinance 2025-11 regarding a zoning map amendment request by Perry Holmes presented by Michelle Pitt, the City Recorder.
Okay, now this matter doesn't need a motion, but we just need to put this on the record. But we discovered that Ordinance 2025-11, the title of it on the ordinance itself says, "An Ordinance of the Tulare City Council Amending the Tulare City Zoning Map for Property Located Near 1405 Conifer Street." But the ordinance itself talks about approving a zoning map amendment request by Perry Holmes to consider approval of the Compass Point RSD zoning ordinance and to reassign the zoning for 1,227 acres located from approximately 1,000 north to the city's northern boundary and from 1,200 west to approximately Berry, Berry Boulevard, from the R17 residential and GC general commercial zoning districts to the Compass Point RSD zoning district. That is how it was advertised on our agenda and it was discussed as that title, not the title that was actually on the ordinance. So we just need to rename the ordinance so it matches with what's on our agenda and what was discussed in the meeting. So just wanted to point that out.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then item twenty-four is invoices and purchase orders. Michelle's walking away, so I figured there's none. Item twenty-five is our minutes from June fourth, 2025 work meeting and the June fourth, 2025 business meeting. Any corrections? They look great as always. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes four-zero, and we are adjourned at eight-thirty PM.